Good evening, and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Cedeau?
Here.
Borick?
Yes, here.
Mangum?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Nichols? Paulson?
Here.
Black?
Here. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Pastor Daniel Norris representing Gateway Apostolic Tabernacle.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to come and do the invocation. Why don't everyone just pray with me tonight? Lord, we love you. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity, for the privilege, Lord, to come together for this meeting. Thank you, Lord, for everyone here. And God, we thank you for the officials that are in place, and thank you, Lord, for citizens and people that come. And, Lord, we thank you for the agenda and everything that you have in store for us tonight. We pray, Lord, for this city, and we pray, Lord, for your hand over this city and over this meeting tonight. We pray that you guide, that you direct, that you lead, Lord. And we pray tonight, God, that there would be no biased opinion. I pray, though, Lord, tonight, that there would be no selfish agenda. But, Lord, we pray tonight, God, help us to come together in unity. Help us to come together, Lord, as one, amen, to help each other, Lord, to strengthen each other, Lord, to come to agreement, and, Lord, to be able to get things accomplished tonight. We pray that, Lord, you would help us to accomplish the things in this city that need to be done. Lord, together, we pray that you lead and guide and direct, Lord, every thought, every voice, Lord, every intent tonight. We pray that it be, Lord, for the bettering, Lord, and for the good of the community of the city tonight. We pray and we ask you, Lord, God, to direct every word and guide every word. And we pray, Lord, for your will to be done. We pray for your direction tonight. We thank you for it. Thank you again for everyone here, Lord. And, God, we ask you to bless this meeting. Bless our city, Lord, tonight, we pray. And we pray, God, that, Lord, you do your perfect work and your will in this city, in this meeting, and in everything we do, Lord. Let it all be for your glory. We give you the honor, praise, and glory tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Three is a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: Special Clarification and Special City Council Meetings of July 11, 2024; Clarification and Regular City Council Meetings of July 18, August 1, and August 15, 2024; Special City Council Town Hall Meeting of July 23, 2024; and the Work Session Meeting of August 8, 2024. B. Material Claims. Council may wish to ratify approval of the material claims for the period of October 3 through 15, 2024, and approve the material claims for the period of October 16 through 31, 2024. C. Treasurers' Report. Council may wish to approve the Treasurers' Report for September 2024, showing cash and investments as of September 30, 2024. D. Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Emma -- I told you I'd do this. Anna -- let's see. I Anna Kohn to serve as a member of the CDBG Advisory Committee representing Alameda Neighborhood. Emma's term will begin November 8, 2024, and expire January 1, 2028. E. Housing Alliance and Community Partners' Board Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Raina Peterson to serve as a member of the HACP Board of Directors, replacing Lori Crane, who resigned. Raina's term will begin November 8, 2024, and expire April 23, 2025. F. Planning and Zoning Commission Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Richard Phillips to continue serving as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Richard's term will begin November 6, 2024, and expire November 6, 2028. G. Pocatello Arts Council Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Megan J. Soli to serve as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council, replacing Stacy Barker, who resigned. Megan Soli's term will begin November 8, 2024, and expire May 7, 2027. H. Pocatello Regional Airport Commission Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Ali Khan to continue serving as a member of the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission. Ali's term will begin November 18, 2024, and expire November 18, 2026. I. Removal Appointment to Americans with Disability Act Grievance Committee Taylor. Council may wish to consider removal of Ricky Taylor as a member of the ADA Grievance Committee in accordance with Idaho Code 50-210. Effective date will be November 7, 2024. J. 2024 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Application Ratification, Police Department. Council may wish to approve a request to ratify the 2024 Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application in the amount of $19,515. And this is an annual allocation administered by Bennett County, and there is no matching funds. If awarded, police department staff will use grant funds toward the purchase of a digital evidence locker and two point-blank Level III shields. Total purchase cost will be $23,617.56. The police department has allocated $19,515, and the remaining balance is available in the Pocatello Police Department budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as outlined in Agenda Item Number Three, Items A through J.
Second, I had a question.
Okay, we have a motion by Council President Lyric and a second by Council Member Mangum, gotcha. And we have a question.
I'm curious what a digital evidence locker is.
Chief?
Chief Roger Shire, the Pocatello Police Department. So, in this day and age, the majority of our evidence is found on your cellphone. And in order for us to properly keep that information being either dumped or erased remotely, we have to put them in what's called a Faraday bag. So, these are lockers where we can put this digital evidence and secure it so that we're not using these bags, but it's more put in a locker. It's -- as we bought a CellBrite machine, which is a more enhanced ability to do this, it's going to help the capability of us downloading the digital evidence.
It's a Faraday cage.
Essentially, yes.
Thank you.
Super. Thank you. So, we have a motion by Council President Lyric and a second by Council Member Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Borick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four is Proclamations. We have no proclamations, so we'll move to Agenda Item Five is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On November 14 at 9:00 a.m. will be a city council work session. November 19, 6:00 p.m. will be a special city council town hall meeting. On November 21, 5:30 p.m., a council clarification meeting. 6:00 p.m. a regular city council meeting. Other events: November 9, 11:00 a.m., Veterans Day Parade in historic downtown Pocatello. November 11, Veterans Day. City offices will be closed for this holiday. Sanitation Department collection trucks will remain on their regular schedule. November 11 at 11:00 a.m., a ribbon cutting for the completion of Brady Chapel Restoration Phase One and Open House from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. On November 15, City Creek Recreation Area gates will be closed to motorized access until approximately May 15, 2025. November 21 through the 23rd is Festival of Trees at Stevens Performing Arts Center. As a reminder, annual leaf collection will continue through November 30. Leaves must be placed in a large paper compostable bags, not boxes or plastic bags. Place compostable leaf bags curbside by 7:00 a.m. on their regular collection day to be taken to the Bennett County landfill compost site. Food for fines at Marshall Public Library through December 14. For every nonperishable food item donated, patrons can have their fines forgiven by $1. Please contact the library for more information. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Six. It is a public hearing, Vacation of Right-of-Way. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by RU4 LLC, R4U LLC, represented by Sunrise Engineering, and BSG Gate City Properties LLC, represented by Gregory S. Clutter, and to vacate the public's interest in a 30-foot wide access and utility easement located across the portion of lots 2 and 5, Block 2 of the Crossing Division 1 Alameda -- or amended plat. Staff recommends approval of the application with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. What happened? Where's my thing?
Where's your bell?
Moved it for the elections.
Oh, they moved it for the election. All right. I got it. We're good. We're good. Council, has there been any ex parte communication? Man, I lost control of this public hearing about a heartbeat. Thank you. The applicant, if you would like to come up here. Sorry, I don't have my wooden stick.
You're just fine. Rob Husaveld with Sunrise Engineering. We're here tonight to ask you to vacate this easement. In exchange, we have provided a different access that is located on the city of Pocatello property. We've been working closely with staff. I think we're all on the same page. So, we're mainly here to ask, answer any questions that you may have about it.
Do we have any questions, council, right now? All right. Thank you. Staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. As noted, you have before you a request to vacate a 30-foot wide access and utility easement located across a portion of lots 2 and 5, Block 2 of the crossings, Division 1, amended plat. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the property boundaries were provided written notice of the petition. Notice was also provided in the Idaho State Journal, as well as utility providers and affected city departments were noticed. Staff recommends approval of the request to vacate the subject access and utility easement, with the exception of retaining a triangular area encompassing 722 square feet, more or less, to allow access to the existing utilities and sewer. You can refer to the Public Works Memorandum for details. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have, Mayor and council.
Council, any questions for Matt? Matt, have there been any emails or correspondence that you've received in your office that the council hasn't seen?
There has not, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, does we have any in your office that we have not seen?
No correspondence.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Then I'd look for any testimony supporting the application. I'd look for any testimony uncommitted to the application. Look for any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, I see no reason for a rebuttal with that then. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the vacation of right-of-way, and that as long as all staff recommendations are approved according to the application and Agenda Item Six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Member Mangum and a second by Council President Lyric. Yes, we got a question for you.
Does that -- do the conditions you're proposing in your motion, council member, include the exception mentioned by staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear for the public.
Sounds good, then. Thank you. We have a motion and a second with the clarification. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Seven. It is a public hearing. CDBG PY 2025 Annual Action Plan Needs Hearing. In accordance with the city's citizen participation plan, this time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the citizens and organizations on any housing and community development needs they have identified to achieve the goals of the Community Development Block Grant CDBG program related to providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and access to economic opportunities that should be prioritized and included in the CDBG Program Year 2025 Annual Action Plan. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel? You love that, don't you? I love it. I think it's a great move.
I didn't hear the gavel, and I laughed again.
Good evening, Mayor Blad, members of the city council, and Christine Howe, the grants manager for the Planning and Development Services Department. As a recipient of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, funding, the city has adopted a citizen participation plan that guides community engagement and outreach when approving plans, reports, and documents that utilize these federal funds. As part of the CPP, the city holds an annual needs hearing to gather feedback and public comment related to the community needs, particularly those that relate to providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities for low and moderate income persons. The information gathered at this hearing is then incorporated into our CDBG Annual Action Plan. Annual Action Plan is the strategic plan that seeks to achieve the goals that were developed in our five-year consolidated plan, which is all required by HUD. The five-year CON Plan identifies priorities that are then informed throughout the CDBG program years by this public comment and feedback. So, our upcoming CDBG program year is PY 2025, which will extend from April 1, 2025, through March 31, 2026. The public needs hearing today provides an opportunity for feedback from the community so that we can prioritize the available HUD funding for our housing, public services, public infrastructure, and public facility activities. In addition to this hearing, the city solicits applications from our qualifying partnering agencies so that we can administer the CDBG funding. We held a technical assistance meeting in September and received our first draft applications from eight local nonprofit agencies for housing, public services, and public facilities. At this time, the federal budget for CDBG is unknown, but for the purposes of PY 2025, we're using an annual entitlement estimate of $350,000. Based on our draft applications, the requests for funding for public services totals $113,350, and public facility requests are $33,230. Additional funding requests include our Neighborhood Sidewalk Program, the Renewal Housing Rehab Grant and Loan Program, and our Led Safe and Healthy Homes Program match, and our administrative costs. So, our preliminary request for funding with all of these items is $488,000. Federal funding levels remain consistent. Not all these requests will be accommodated, so our staff works with the CDBG Advisory Committee to come up with a recommendation for approval for the city council. At the hearing tonight, we encourage members of the public to give their input on the housing and community development needs so that we may consider this as part of our scoring of the agency applications, as well as incorporate that into our PY 25 action plan. The advisory committee will review the final applications in November and present these for city council for funding in January. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Only thing I have is, have there been any correspondence that the council has not seen in your office?
No.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, have you received any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And I'd look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposing the application.
Thank you, Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. I oppose this project, this funding, because, what's one, it's unconstitutional, because our public funds are given to private entities, individuals, and also, we don't get a voice, and it's not our vote to be able to say how those are given, and we don't get just compensation back. It's just another form of socialism. I've referred to this for years. We have a lot of people who can't afford a place to live, or food to eat, or water to drink, or vehicles, or education, things like that, because of other things that are being put upon them, either through taxes, or fees, or situations at every level of our government in public service. And so, I'm asking you, as I've done before, stand true to the Constitution. I mean, Mayor Blad, you just got a pay raise, I was told, and there's public service benefits. We have the nonprofit donations. There's been kickbacks even at the county level, like when it was on semiconductor, the $80,000 funds that you gave to the airport, too, and it was SkyWest out there. I mean, these are private entities that we don't get anything back from. Yes, they might provide a service here, but if they don't, then we just gave $800,000 to someone. And so, we have a Constitution for a reason, and we would all be succeeding if we stuck true to that Constitution. That was established by God, and our Christian founders, who came from the monarchies of Europe, were back in that same mess, and back in the Dark Ages almost. And so, I ask you to not even be a part of it. And if you -- I've had answers, well, they'll just give the money to somebody else. Well, stand true and say to the Congress, no. Know that IRS, this whole nightmare has got to be dealt with, and not just keep digging ourselves deeper, to the point that everybody's going to lose everything, including our children, our homes. We're losing our health, selling out to STEM. Can't even have a clean drink of water. Every time I go into the grocery store, I'm tired of seeing elderly people that are stick-thin, staggering, because they can't afford any food to eat, much less young families and veterans. Let's address the cause of why we are in the hole. And I ask it in share it in the name of Jesus, because that's who you're going to be accountable for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, Christine, I would give you the opportunity to rebut. Anything there, or just a few final words?
Sure. Just to clarify that this is the needs hearing as part of our citizen participation plan, so any and all public comments will be reported back in the report and help inform the action plan. And then that action plan will come before you after an additional public comment period from December to January. So, we look forward to bringing that before council in January.
Okay, super. Thank you. And I declare the public hearing closed. Got that for you. We'll move to Agenda Item Eight. U.S. EPA Community Grant Application Johnny Creek Sewering Project. Council may wish to approve submission of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Community Grant for Phase One of Johnny Creek Sewering Project Grant in the amount of $1,750,000. And if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. There is no required match.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Eight, the U.S. EPA Community Grant Application for the Johnny Creek Sewering Project, and authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lyric and a second by Council Member Paulson. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Borick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Older Adult Home Modification Program Grant Application. Council may wish to approve submission of the grant application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the FY '24 Older Home Modification Program. The grant would provide necessary funds to make home modifications for eligible low-income seniors to allow aging in place, and the total request for the funds is $1,089,553.22, and does not require a match. Council may wish to approve the grant application submission, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Member Mansfield.
I would move to approve the submission of the grant application for the Older Adult Home Modification Program, authorizing your acceptance of the grant and signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Paulson. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes. Agenda Item Ten, Bicycles for Recovery Memorandum of Understanding MOU. Council may wish to approve an MOU between the city and Bicycles for Recovery, Inc., authorizing the Pocatello Police Department to donate bicycles that have been retained for the required period of time, and that have been declared surplus by the Pocatello City Council to Bicycles for Recovery, Inc. Bicycles for Recovery, Inc. is registered 501(c)(3) that donates bikes to individuals in the community who are in need of transportation for employment-related activities. Mr. Mayor? Yes. Go ahead, Council Member Mangum.
Thank you, sir. I would move that we approve Agenda Item Ten as outlined, approving the MOU between the city and bikes for recovery, authorizing the Pocatello Police Department to donate bikes that have been retained for a specific period of time, as outlined in Agenda Item Ten.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Member Mangum and a second by Council Member Mansfield. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Highline Widening Project Contract Addendum. Council may wish to approve a contract addendum with Keller Associates Incorporated and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents regarding a professional services agreement for the Highline Road Widening Project. Funds are available in Fund 70.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item 11 as outlined, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. It's not in here, but ran.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Council Member Mangum and a second by Council Member Mansfield. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
I thought I was going to get to sign something without legal review, but I can't now. Agenda Item 12, Local Professional Services Agreement North Portonoff Crossing Base Phase Harper-Levitt Engineering, Incorporated. Council may wish to approve a local professional services agreement for the North Portonoff Crossing Base Phase between the city of Pocatello and Harper-Levitt Engineering, Incorporated, HLE, for the completion of the National Environmental Protection Act, NEPA, permitting and design-build bid package as funded through the city's RISE grant, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had moved for approval of the local professional services agreement as outlined in Agenda Item 12, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Council Member Mansfield and a second by Council Member Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes. Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Bid Award Contract First Avenue Storm Sewer Project. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for the First Avenue Storm Sewer Project to RS Jobler Incorporated in the amount of $859,111.50, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the contract bid award on the First Avenue Storm Sewer Project, as recommended by staff, and authorize your signature on all applicable documents, including change orders, subject to legal department review. up to 5% of the project total, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the contract bid award on the First Avenue Storm Sewer Project, as recommended by staff, and authorize your signature on all applicable documents, including change orders, subject to legal department review, as authorized in Agenda Item Number Thirteen.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Cheetah and a second by Council President Lyric. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheetah?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen, Bid Award Contract WPC Fencing Project. Counsel may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for fencing installation at the Water Pollution Control WPC Facility to Mountain State's fencing in the amount of $100,895, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Council President Lyric and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Borick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheetah?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fifteen, Piggyback Bid Acceptance Water Department. Counsel may wish to accept the following piggyback bids for the Water Department, and if approved, authorize the mayor's signature on all documents pertaining to the purchase, subject to legal department review. A, City of Boise's co-op contract via Mountain Home Auto Ranch for the procurement of one 2025 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 dump truck in the amount of $61,329.18. B, City of Boise's co-op contract with Mountain Home Auto Ranch for the procurement of one 2025 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 flatbed truck in the amount of $52,337.82. And C, the City of Boise's co-op contract via Mountain Home Auto Ranch for the procurement of two 2025 Chevrolet 1500 work trucks in the total amount of $81,045.30. Funding for all items is available in the Water Department FY 2025 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for acceptance of the piggyback bids, 15A through C, and authorize your signature on all pertinent documents pertaining to the purchases, subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheetah?
Yes.
Borick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Sixteen, Mueller Valve Insertion Machine Procurement Request, Water Department. Counsel may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve the purchase of a Mueller Valve Insertion Machine in the amount of $59,172.95, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. Funding for the purchase is available in the Water Department FY 2025 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Mueller Valve Insertion Machine procurement request from the Water Department, as outlined in Agenda Item Number Sixteen, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lyric and a second by Councilmember Mansfield. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Borick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetah?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seventeen is items from the audience. We have nobody signed up for the audience, so we will go ahead and move to Agenda Item Eighteen, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much, counsel.